Okay, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to grant the application.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 189-25, Dennis and Melissa Walsh. Permission to leave six-foot fence having front yard of 9.1 feet instead of required 10 feet. Residence AA District, southwest corner of J Court and Tom Farino Drive, Bohemia.
Good evening. Dennis Walsh, how are you?
Dennis, your name and address, please.
Dennis Walsh, 10J Court, Bohemia, New York, 11716.
Thank you. And just here on the variance for your fence?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, any questions from the board at this time?
No questions.
Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? Take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Application's granted.
Thank you, sir.
Application number 190-25, Nicholas and Sarah Sampson. Permission to erect one-story addition leaving front yard of 39.8 feet, second-story addition leaving front yard of 37.7 feet, and roofed over porch leaving front yard of 32.8 feet instead of required 40 feet each, and to leave four-foot fence in driveway site distance triangle exceeding permitted height of three feet. Residence AA District, southeast corner of Bayview Avenue and Middle Road, Bayport.
John Brocco, 111 Railroad Avenue, Seville, New York. Good evening, members of the board. John Brocco, architect, on behalf of the owners and applicants, Nicholas and Sarah Sampson. First off, I would like the board to know that the applicant will adjust the fence to conform with the site triangle requirement, so we would ask for that variance request to be withdrawn from the application.
Okay.
We are also here before you this evening in regards to front yard setback variances for a proposed one-story addition, a second-story addition, and a roof over portico. The one-story addition request of two inches is de minimis and would be in line with the existing house. The second-floor addition request of 37.7 feet, we feel, is also de minimis as it equates to a 6% relaxation of the required 40-foot setback. And lastly, the roof over porch would have been eligible for the permitted encroachment of six feet if not for the fact that the existing house is 39.8 feet from the front property line and not 40 feet. Many of the houses on Bayview within 500 feet of the subject parcel are around 30 feet from the front property line, so the proposed roof over portico would still be further from the front property line than many of the neighboring houses. We did find three grants by the board for front yard variances within 500 feet of the subject parcel. They were grants of 31.8 feet, 30 feet, and 25.2 feet, all where 40 feet was required. Therefore, we feel the proposed additions would be well within the nature and character of the neighborhood, and if the board has any questions, more than happy to try and answer them for you.
Any questions at this time?
No.
Planning, any comments?
Planning's only concern was the site triangle, which they've already addressed.
All right, so first, I'm going to make a motion to remove the reference to leave four-foot fence in driveway site distance triangle exceeding permitted height of three feet. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
That's been removed from the calls. Anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? Okay, then I'll take a motion on the balance of the application, please.
Make a motion to grant the application.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I hear Chris coming. Application number 191-25, William Farley. Permission to use dwelling for two-family, family use only pursuant to Islip Town Code Section 68-419.1, and to leave patio having side yard of 3.5 feet instead of required four feet. Residence AA District, south side of Bushwick Avenue, 563 feet east of Caleb's Path, Central Islip.
Good evening. Len Crick, Islandwide Permit Services, office at 86 Center Street in Ronkonkoma. Mr. Chairman, we're here tonight to address two issues regarding the Farley property. A small patio on the west side of the house is holding a three-and-a-half-foot side yard, just six inches short of the required four feet, and as submitted photos show, the patio is primarily gravel and privately fenced off. The Farleys would also like to apply the town's two-family, family-use-only special exception to their house since their daughter is dealing with medical issues stemming from long-term COVID.
Thank you. All that work is submitted and we have it. Any questions from the board at this time?
No questions.
Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? Okay, I'll take a motion, please.
Motion to grant the application. And to grant the balance of the application.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted, thank you.
Thank you.
Application number 192-25, John and Karen Pagano. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code Section 68-602, having gross floor area of 821 square feet instead of permitted 800 square feet. Residence A District, southeast corner of Hillary Street and Bucknell Road, West Seville.
Julia Riggs with Integrity Expediting, 2100 Middle Country Road in Center H. I'm before you today seeking to establish an 821-square-foot accessory apartment. There will be a second-story entrance constructed to access the apartment from outside. We currently have a compliance permit being processed for the second-story accessory apartment and addition as well as a building permit application for the second-story entrance. Pending board approval, there would be an expansion of the driveway to accommodate for proper off-street parking. There have been no known complaints from any neighbors, and if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions from the board at this time? No questions. Planning, any comments at this time?
No comment.
No. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to grant the application for a period of three years.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted, thank you.
Thank you.
Application number 193-25, Joseph and Michelle Bonjourne. Permission to leave driveway on side property line not having required setback of four feet and front yard occupancy of 42% instead of required permitted 40%. Residence B District, west side of Rollstone Avenue, 60 feet north of Brook Street, West Seville.
Good evening for the applicant, Thomas F., 8 Ocean Avenue, Suite Number 2, Bayshore, New York, 11706.
Good. Presentation?
No, Your Honor.
No?
Mr. Chairman, we also have an open permit for the in-ground pool at the rear of the property.
So we're here on the driveway and then on the front yard occupancy?
That's correct.
All right. Any questions from the board at this time?
No questions.
Planning, any comments on either?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Motion to grant the application for a period of three years.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 194-25, Timothy and Adele Burns. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code Section 68-602, having gross floor area of 904 square feet instead of permitted 800 square feet. Residence B District, 278 Cluster, south side of Inverness Road, 989.93 feet west of Annandale Road, Holbrook.
Timothy Burns, 36 Inverness Road, Holbrook? Yes. Any questions at this time? Planning, any comments?
I would just note, this is an existing two-family, so it's a bit bigger than we'd normally grant for an accessory apartment, but given the circumstances, I don't have any issue with it.
Yes, thank you, Nick. I was just going to point that out to the board. 900 is usually a little higher than you go for an accessory apartment, but the board has looked at it differently when the property had previously had a two-family, family-use-only permit, which you and your parents had for 30 years.
My in-laws, yeah, 31 years.
Yeah. So when the two-family situation doesn't exist anymore and they convert to an accessory apartment, the board has been more accepting of the apartment being over 800 square feet.
Excellent, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, then I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application for a period of three years.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Thanks very much.
Application number 195-25, Carl Glazer, trustee of the Glazer Family Irrevocable Trust. Permission to leave shed having side yard of 0.9 feet instead of required two feet. Residence A District, south side of Thrift Street, 653.4 feet east of 17th Avenue, Ronkonkoma.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Roxanne Trela, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at 231 Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. We're here tonight to maintain a shed. It's about 127 square feet, and it's been there for about 25 years.
Okay, any questions from the board at this time?
No.
No questions?
No.
Planning, any comments on this matter?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Thank you. All in favor? Application's granted.
Application number 196-25, Ernesto and Nicolaza Colindres. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code Section 68-602. Residence B District, northwest corner of East Maple Street and Nicol Avenue, Central Islip.
Good evening again, Roxanne Trela, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at 231 Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. We're here tonight to establish an accessory apartment. The apartment is 335 square feet. It is owner-occupied. Engineering has reviewed the driveway, however, it does seem, needs some improvements before we can receive final engineering approval.
Any questions?
No questions.
Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, so we'll make the approval subject to the engineering. All right, so I'll take a motion, please.
Motion to grant the application for a period of three years subject to the engineering.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 197-25, Omar Alejandro Inamarado Alas. Permission to leave second-story addition, 12 by 22, and roofed over porch, having side yards of 6.75 feet and 11.05 feet instead of required 14 feet each, total side yards of 17.8 feet instead of required 28 feet, and floor area ratio of 25.8% instead of permitted 25%, and to establish accessory apartment on lot having width of 60 feet instead of required 75 feet, and lot area of 7,200 square feet instead of required 7,500 square feet. Residence B District, east side of Pine Acres Boulevard, 80 feet north of Sue Drive, Bayshore.
Good evening again, Roxanne Trela, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at 231 Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. We're here seeking permission to leave a second-story addition. It's a small addition, about 12 by 22, that was erected directly above the garage. It maintains a side yard of 6.75, which is in line with the existing dwelling. We're also here for a roof over the front porch that has a side yard of 11.05 instead of the 14 required, and again, that also is in line with the existing dwelling. Both of these items have triggered secondary variances for the FAR, 25.8 instead of the 25, and total side yards of 17.8 instead of 28. That brings us to the accessory apartment. Typically, with a substandard lot, the concern is the driveway. We did have engineering come out and look at it. The driveway does meet the specifications for the four cars. The only items requested from the Department of Engineering was a hold harmless agreement, which has been submitted to DPW, and an engineer certification for the pavers, which has also been submitted to engineering. The last item outstanding, we were waiting for some warmer weather, was a saw cut had to be hot sealed. The apartment is a small apartment. It's only 268 square feet. The occupant is his brother, and he's also listed on the deed as a title owner. And we did find some precedent for the side yard. We found three precedent in particular, numbers 374-22 that granted a side yard of 7.6, number 266-05 that granted a side yard of 7.67, and a third one at 161-89 that granted a side yard of 7.7. And I would like to point out that when those were before the board and were granted, they were to erect the second-story addition. It wasn't to maintain, as it is now. I'll take any questions from the board, if you have any.
The person occupying the apartment would be, is also on the deed?
He is, and it is his brother. Unfortunately, he doesn't meet, like, the two-family exception. They're both young. They don't meet the age requirement, and they don't have any medical ailments.
So there's two kitchens?
Right.
So that's why, even though they're co-owners?
Correct.
They would like to have a second kitchen. You mentioned that the apartment's under 300 square feet?
It is under 268, so it's a small apartment for a single occupant.
So theoretically, that's a variance that you'd need from the board?
Yes.
The existing house, first floor, one of the yards, Ms. Trela, is at 6.75 feet instead of 14?
Yes, that's where it exists.
Okay, and how did it get there? Was it CO?
It is on the CO at 6.75, yes.
Okay, so that's there legally. How do we adjust or account for the second floor when it's already a 50% relaxation? What's the rationale that we have, if any?
I think, like, we've seen from the precedent in the area that there were some houses that were built on these substandard lots, and when they went to erect the second story over the garage, they were also before the board for these large setbacks.
Do we have 6.75?
So we have 7.6, 7.6, and 7.7, but that's where their side yard existed. And when those were before the board, they were all to erect. They weren't to maintain. So the board granted them permission to build even with these substandard side yard setbacks.
But if we go to 6.75, then next month it's going to be 6.5 and then 6.2. Where does it stop? It's already 50%.
I think that that's more a matter of where the existing house is built. So if there are no more that are as close as ours, then you wouldn't see them before the board.
But that doesn't seem like it's going to happen. There are going to be houses that are going to be built on substandard lots and want to go up. I'm not comfortable with going down to 6.75 instead of 14. It just seems substantial.
I agree, but in this area?
How would you agree?
With the size of the lot and the way that the other actions were brought before the board, it was the exact same thing. The existing dwelling was built that way. They went exactly up.
But you keep saying the exact same thing. It may have been the same built on a substandard lot, but there's nothing at 6.75. So it's not the exact same thing. Granted, somebody built on a substandard lot, that's exactly the same. And somebody went up, that's exactly the same. But the rest of it...
It's one foot difference, because that's where ours lies.
You've been here enough that I always have a problem when you're that compromised, and then you go up. I don't, I'm looking at the aerial. It puts you looking into your neighbor's yard and into their house. And there's no buffer, when there should be 14 feet. It's not one floor, it's the second floor. That always concerns me.
Planning, you have any comments on this?
Yeah, so, as usual, the presentation was very thorough, and she was very forthright with everything. There's the three grants she had mentioned. There's 7.6 to 7.7, and all of those were to erect a second-story addition going straight up in line with the first-story addition that was compromised. It is correct to point out, this is one foot even closer. I haven't seen anything that is quite that close, so I suppose, really, the way to be looking at it is either would the board want to hold the line at 7.6, or would you instead take the tact that the other three grants were granted in the spirit of it being a going straight-up sort of grant? Because those didn't have precedent or anything. All three of those houses just happened to already have a side yard that close, is what was happening there. I'm not saying it's a great application, I'm just...
Would you agree? You know, you want to roll the dice, you can, but when it comes up snake eyes at two, as they say, you crap out.
I mean, I think I could go back and see how many more houses are exactly, you know, the same distance as ours to see if this would create some kind of a precedent in the area.
It would.
I think the precedent in the area is to go straight up.
Roxanne, how do we... Well, yeah, but that's like your house is six inches from the property line. Well, I'm going straight up. Somebody would stand at that podium and say, "It's exactly the same as every other one. We're just going straight up." Yeah, but we have to look at the distance. If we don't look at that, then we're not doing our job. And if we're now down at 6.75, by August 15th of this year, we're going to be at 5.75.
Not if there are no other houses that are as close.
Oh, there's always some other house. Okay, we made, I think the record has been made.
And the last grant was in '22, so it's not like these approvals are old. They're from pretty much every era. We have one from '89, one from 2005, one from '22, and they're all exactly going straight up, not protruding any further.
I know, but that's not the only thing we look at.
I understand, I just wanted to...
No, I get it, they're going straight up.
Going straight up.
There's no doubt.
And those cases were brought forward the same way. That's, you know, what they brought forward. They didn't have any other precedent, the first, you know, the first one.
And Roxanne, just a little bit of clarification. The zoning denial submitted at the office said the apartment was 340 square feet, so that's why we didn't mention it needing a variance. And just by my rough calculations, I'm coming out with about 312. So I think you're probably close enough to 300.
Okay, I know the plans have been revised quite a few times, so if it wasn't in the zoning denial, then I'm going to assume that it is correct, but I'm going to just double-check really quick on these last plans to make sure we are over the 300.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? Planning, anything else?
No, I have nothing.
I have over 300, too. I think they went by the survey on this last calculation, but on the interior, it does meet the 300.
Okay, so it's over 300 then?
Yes, barely, but barely.
Okay.
All right, and I'll take a motion to reserve.
Motion to reserve decision.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Reserve the decision.
And you're going to submit?
Yes, I can check the area to see if there's anybody that's any closer.
Application number, sorry, swear I'm going progressives. 198-25, Pedigree Holdings LLC. Permission to reconstruct one-story addition and erect one-story addition resulting in expansion of non-conforming use by 27%, leaving rear yard of 2.5 feet instead of required 25 feet, and floor area ratio of 31.42% instead of permitted 25%, and to leave driveway having front yard occupancy of 41.4% instead of permitted 40%. Business One District, southwest corner of Brentwood Road and Tilly Street, Bayshore.
Good evening again, Roxanne Trela, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at 231 Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. We're here for permission to reconstruct a one-story addition and erect a one-story addition resulting in the expansion of a non-conforming use. So there typically is a special exception to expand up to 25%. This property in question goes up to the 27% because of the 33-square-foot addition in the front of the dwelling and because they are now legalizing the basement conversion to recreational space. In the basement, it is one-open floor plan. There are no divisions, and there's a half-bath down there. And the 33-square-foot addition in the front of the dwelling is basically, there's like a square indent, and they're just bringing that indent to be flushed with the rest of the dwelling. And they are reconstructing where they had a small fire, so there aren't many interior changes other than fixing the fire damage, and they are changing the ridge height to match the rest of the dwelling. We're also here for front yard occupancy of 41.4% instead of the permitted 40. We are on Brentwood Road. It is a busier road there, so they did need to expand a little bit. They actually aren't building anything larger other than that small 33-square-foot addition squaring off the front of the house. Everything that's being reconstructed is already existing.
Planning, any comments?
Yeah, so it's just the only addition is the 33 square feet. The finished basement's not getting counted in the FAR because it's not apartment, although it is getting counted in the expansion of the non-conforming use, which is what brings them over 25%. And then, as she was saying, most of the rest of the project is repairing a fire-damaged section of the house that already existed at this very compromised side yard. The ridge height's changing, like, very slightly. It's pretty minimal, so it's in effect trying to repair something that had already previously existed. That's the bulk of the project here. And as far as non-conformity goes, it's a residential use and business zoning. Those aren't really usually considered problematic. Yeah.
Thank you, have a good night.
Application number 199-25, Jennifer Tucker. Permission to leave in-ground pool having front yard of 34 feet instead of required 35 feet, to install pool patio leaving front yard of 23 feet instead of required 30 feet, and to leave six-foot fence having front yard of 3.5 feet instead of required 10 feet. Residence AA District, southeast corner of Green Lawn Avenue and Valley Stream Street, Islip Terrace.
Hi, I'm Donnie Tucker. I live at the same address. I'm Jennifer's husband, 757 Green Lawn Avenue, Islip Terrace, 11752. I know this looks kind of crazy. I'm applying for three variances. I apologize.
Slow down and speaking to the microphone.
Yeah.
Yeah, we couldn't understand a word you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I apologize. I wasn't initially planning on applying for three variances. The pool kind of caught me by surprise. It wound up a foot off. I'm not really sure how that happened, but the patio is simply proposed. That's supposed to be done next month. We liked the layout that the mason gave us, and, you know, he told us that we were going to have to apply for variance if we wanted to get it done that way, but that is just proposed. That hasn't been done yet. The main thing was the... Sorry.
Okay, we're just checking, I was just checking to see, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say your name before, so...
Donnie Tucker. Jennifer's husband, yeah.
Why don't you tell us about the six-foot fence?
Okay. Okay, so, okay, sorry. So the fence, I was kind of worried about the pool. I asked if I could talk to anybody to find out how this was going to go, so I didn't have to worry for the next two months. Somebody gave me an email for somebody I could talk to.
Wait, wait, slow down.
Are you talking about the fence?
Yes, yes. I emailed somebody who told me that from the, not from the variance board, but I emailed somebody who said that the average property line from the street is actually about eight feet. If he's correct, mine is actually anywhere from 11 foot 2 inches to 12 feet. And if you look at my survey, my fence is three-and-a-half feet from my property line, which puts us significantly far back from the street. It's actually about three-and-a-half feet from my property line. My property line is at least three feet back from the average. So if he's correct, if the average property line is at eight feet from the street, mine would be anywhere from six foot 2 inches to seven feet back from that. Yeah, according to the survey, it's about three, it's three-and-a-half feet from my current property line.
Well, actually, a really quick sort of pedantic note first. I forgot to mention this to Mary earlier. I think it says "yards" in the call to the meeting. Oh, sorry. I think it says "yards" in the call to the meeting. We need to change that to feet?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. Good. Regarding what he was mentioning with right-of-ways, he's, usually, yeah, right-of-ways are eight to 10 feet. I don't know what the length of this one is exactly, although if it is correct, it's 12 feet. That's a small difference. I don't know if it necessarily would make up for the fact that he has a fairly compromised six-foot fence here. I don't think we normally would consider that to be substantial enough to really consider it a unique circumstance.
Can you zoom out a little bit?
I think he's going to have to, at least from my perspective, he's going to have to lower the fence or move it, move it back or put it all bushes. I know you want the privacy.
Yeah.
Everybody wants the privacy, but we have a code we have to follow.
Right, right. Well, I guess that was my kind of main, my main argument was that my property line is further back from the average, and the fence is pretty far back. And if you're coming from, I don't know if you can see, but if you're coming from Valley Stream Street heading towards Green Lawn, it doesn't actually, right now, my fence isn't blocking any sightlines for anything, so if moving it back even a foot isn't going to open, it's only going to open up more sightline to my actual dwelling on the property, my house. Well, I guess that was my kind of main, my main argument was that my property line is further back from the average, and the fence is pretty far back, and if you're coming from, I don't know if you can see, but if you're coming from Valley Stream Street, heading towards Green Lawn, it doesn't actually, right now, my fence isn't blocking any sightlines for anything, so if moving it back even a foot isn't going to open, it's only going to open up more sightline to my actual dwelling on the property, my house.
It doesn't look any different.
Yeah, you realize that's...
Right, right. Right, but I was informed that the average was eight feet from that. So with the fence being, you know, a pretty good distance back, I figured maybe we'd take that into consideration, but... I'm pretty sure that the person who owned the house previously, the wife, was a full-time botanist, there's bushes all over that property. Yeah. Good. All right, thank you.
Application number 200-25 Juan Cazari Menas and Erica Sime Almonte, permission to erect one-story addition 14.3 by 28, leaving side yard of 12 feet instead of required 14 feet, and total side yards of 26.7 feet instead of required 28 feet. To establish accessory apartment pursuant to Isliptown Code Section 68-602, to leave driveway on side property line not having required setback of four feet, and six-foot fence having front yard of 4.7 feet instead of required 15 feet, and in driveway sight distance triangle exceeding permitted height of three feet. Residence B District, west side of Par Lane North, 176.79 feet south of Quail Drive, Brentwood.
Good afternoon, bar members, my name is Leslie Macau, agent for the owners of 28 Par Lane. We are here requesting relief to construct a proposed detached garage in place of an existing non-conforming carport. We are looking for 12 setback on a 14 required setback. We are also seeking permission for a 538 square feet unnecessary apartment in the basement of this owner-occupied residence. We would like to put on record that the existing south side driveway aligned with the proper line, and the existing fence also in question predates their ownership. The reason we would like to keep this driveway is to use it for two additional parking spots required for the accessory apartment. If the fence is an issue, we are okay with removing it to comply with the 15 setback. The required setback for driveway is four and four feet, and it's currently on the proper line. We hope the bar take this into account as it was not self-created. There are also other driveways in the area with a zero setback, for example, 13 Par Lane is in the neighborhood, like 19 Quail Drive in Brentwood. Okay, if you guys have any questions.
Yes, two comments, the first one's relatively straightforward, we're not in support of anything obstructing site triangles when it comes to driveways, it's a safety hazard, as I've mentioned before. This is a pretty unique scenario with regards to the driveway, they built this driveway, the secondary driveway, next to their neighbor's corner lot, so what the problem here is, this is the fence being called out, it's this white PVC fence, the neighbor has a fence on their secondary front yard, which is not being called out in the call of the meeting, because it's not on this property, but it's also actually a site obstruction. Now, that's not really the neighbor's fault, they put the driveway here after the fact, so it's planning's recommendation that the driveway setback also be denied. And the reasoning being is that we believe that it is exacerbating the issue of the site distance triangle.
Do you understand?
Yeah. Okay.
Or at least cut it back to conform.
So I want to, one driveway, right? Yeah. Okay. Okay, all right. The next, right.
Mary, when they addressed the site obstruction, did that take care of the six-foot fence?
Well, you're probably just going to deny that part of the application.
Okay. So can, I'm looking, the driveway on the right, if they make that driveway wider, will they be able to comply with the front yard activity, do you think?
Once they remove this one, yeah.
Once they remove that one, okay. So you understand?
Yeah.
You have to remove the driveway where the white truck is, and then you can make the, if you can, I mean, you got to...
Only maintain the right driveway, right?
Pardon? I was just saying, yeah.
Yes, make the driveway that doesn't have the white truck larger, that's what he said.
We're going to make the, on the accessory apartment, it's going to be subject to engineering approval.
Yeah.
So they're going to make sure you have enough parking spaces. We're going to deny the fence on the south. I think that's a south.
Yeah, okay.
We'll deny the fence on the south, and then you'll have to, and the setback on the driveway on the south.
And the side.
And the side triangle.
But make sure, is this your house, or you the agent?
Only the agent, yeah. The owners are here.
You turn, it doesn't matter. Just make sure that when you make the driveway without the white truck wider, you know how wide you can go, because you don't want to create a violation in the front yard by having it too wide and not enough grass.
Okay.
So it may be a very narrow area, gap of where you have to be.
All right, small, okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Yes.
Okay, please step aside and let the music play.
Good evening, my name is Keith Mayo, I live at 3 Osprey Lane, Brentwood. I'm definitely against it, it's going to increase the traffic flow, at the end of the block, it's a park, and we've worked hand-in-hand with Suffolk County Police, and they put no parking signs going up into the cul-de-sac, because they engage in all types of crazy behavior. And by allowing more parking in that area, would definitely diminish our quality of life in the neighborhood.
Her application is subject to engineering approval, and they're going to make sure she has enough spaces on her property to support all the parking spaces that they need, so she will not be parking on the street.
Thank you.
They have to have four, room for four parking cars in their driveway.
Okay.
Does that take care of your issue?
Yes, it does, we were just more concerned, because the way it was written, we thought, the last time we were here, they were trying to make a driveway into that cul-de-sac, and we thought that this was the issue right now.
No, I don't believe it is, no.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Okay.
Oh, yes, done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I kind of had the same concerns.
Your name and address, please?
D'Angeli Abreu, 5 Osprey Lane, Brentwood, New York, 11717.
Okay.
So just like Keith, I'm one of the house owners inside the cul-de-sac, I kind of had similar concerns. My concerns were sanitary concerns, like he said, we worked really, really hard, summers after summers, we have a yard that gets occupied during the summer for sports, and that leads to having a traffic of people parking there, doing things that they weren't supposed to do, leaving their waste behind, for example, like contraceptives that were used, bottles, cigarette butts, everything that you can think of. So that was one concern, and another concern was kind of like safety, you know, it's kind of a private area, we, only four houses inside, we know who lives there, we know who drives what, and it's just nice to get home and not worry about who's outside, they don't belong here, or whatever. So that's another concern that I had that I would like to share, but it seems like it was a misunderstanding, like he said, we thought that it was going to be a driveway that was directly going to be affected within the block, but if it's not, then...
Right.
But those were my concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All? Okay, thank you. Ms. Lopez? So you understand our concerns?
Yeah.
Is that you're going to have to remove one driveway and make the other one in compliance with engineering?
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, who has Brentwood? Who has?
All right, I'll make a motion to deny the south driveway on the side property line not having a required setback of four feet, to deny the six-foot fence on the south side, and to deny the side triangle, to grant the accessory apartment for a period of three years, or to grant balance of...
Subject to engineering.
Subject to engineering, I forgot the magic words.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. We got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Okay, thank you.
Application number 201-25 James and Caitlin Goonan, permission to erect one-story addition 11.1 by 16.9, leaving side yard of 11.6 feet instead of required 14 feet, and total side yards of 25 feet instead of required 28 feet. Residence B District, north side of Monroe Avenue, 262 feet east of Madison Street, West Islip.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Christopher Ang, 83 East Main Street, Patchogue, New York. The case before you is for a one-story addition, the side yard of 11.63 is existing, so we're maintaining the 11.63, the house is already at that non-conforming setback, so we're asking the board to consider approving this at 11.63 instead of the required 14 feet.
You're just squaring it off?
Yeah, yep, we're just squaring off the front.
Any other questions from the board? Planning any comments?
As was said, they're just squaring off the house, so no comment.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please. Second, all in favor? Application's granted, thank you.
Application number 202-25 Joshua Rivera and Carrie Loper Rivera, permission to erect second-story addition leaving side yard of 13.4 feet instead of required 14 feet, and total side yards of 27.5 feet instead of required 28 feet.
You're looking for point six.
What's that? I am.
I don't think you need to say much in that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wexler.
You're interested in brevity? Yeah, that's...
I should say where it's located, though, really quick. Residence B District, north side of 45th Street, 166.37 feet east of Comac Road, Islip.
Thank you.
Planning any comments?
No.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Master.
I'll take a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 203-25 Christopher Matriciano and Shannon Panzner Batroschiano, permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Isliptown Code Section 68-602, and to leave second-story deck resulting in floor area ratio of 28.4% instead of permitted 25%. Residence A District, south side of Stuyvesant Road, 453.34 feet east of Higby Drive, Oakdale.
Mr. Ang, Mr. Sullivan always says brevity is rewarded.
We want to hear about, we do want to hear about the apartment.
We'll get you a snack afterward.
Let him tell us about the apartment.
There was an existing apartment on this property before the owners right now bought the house, so we're re-establishing the accessory apartment with the current owners. The deck on the rear brought us over the 25%, so we're at 28.4% on the FAR, that includes the rear deck.
Planning any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Okay, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, for a period of three years, is that motion made for a period of three years?
That is for a period of three years.
Okay, thank you.
Application number 204-25 Lou Rodriguez and Anna Hernandez, permission to erect second-story addition leaving front yard of 32.7 feet, and roofed-over entrance platform leaving front yard of 27.55 feet instead of required 40 feet each. Residence A District, east side of Lorigan Street, 62 feet south of Spur Drive South, through Lotte Athol Street, Islip Terrace.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members, James Apka from Todd O'Connell Architects, 1200 Veterans Highway, Hop Hop, New York, 11788. Here representing tonight the owners of 23 Lorigan Street, Islip Terrace, the Rodriguezes. The application in front of you tonight is for a reduction in front yard due to the reconstruction of an existing second floor. Unfortunately, the homeowners experienced a house fire, and they kind of, it was pretty bad on the back, it was located in the burner room, but they have to reconstruct that, due to that, the existing non-conforming setback, according to the zoning, we have to come in front of the board for relief of that. In conjunction with this project, they have an existing front stoop that we are expanding in width, but not in coming out towards the street, but we are also here for that, as well as the required setback is 40 feet, we are actually experiencing 27.5 to the porch and 31.7 to the front of the reconstruction.
Okay, any questions at this time?
I have a question for Nick, Nick, does the neighborhood support this application?
Yes.
Are the surrounding houses and grants?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, planning?
No, that's good.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Yes, okay, all in favor? All right, granted, application's granted.
Thank you, have a good night.
Application number 205-25 William and Gina Lipp, permission to install in-ground pool leaving side yard and rear yard of 10 feet instead of required 14 feet each, and pool patio leaving side yard of 2 feet instead of required 6 feet. Residence A District, south side of Jackson Avenue, 691 feet east of Higby Lane, West Islip.
Good evening, members of the board, Anthony Powell, Goodwill Expediting, 9 Humphrey Lane, Blue Point, New York. Here this evening represented Mr. and Mrs. Lipp, the property owners at 1938 Jackson Avenue, West Islip. We're requesting relief to install an in-ground pool with side and rear yard setbacks of 10 feet where 14 feet is required, along with a pool patio with a side yard setback of 2 feet where 6 feet is required, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Why can't you comply, you usually want one side in compliance, it looks like you can on the west side, you can move it a little further east, I know your clients don't want to, but they can.
That is true, there is an existing children's play area on the southeast portion of the property, we tried to maintain enough of a distance between the proposed patio and the existing play area for the children.
Yeah, when I look at the town law that we have to follow, I don't see an exemption for children's play area.
Understood.
But no, usually, always, if you can comply, we'll give you these, at least my opinion is, we'll give you the ten in the rear, or you can do either side, which one do you want to comply? You got to speak to your clients and get back to us.
So if we're talking about the side yard setback specifically, the patio?
The pool. The pool's only at 10 feet, it's got to be at 14.
Okay.
The patio, I think, is okay.
Yeah, the patio is...
Is okay?
Patio would be okay.
Okay.
Pool, we'd like you to comply with one of the two variances.
Okay, I can take that back if my client...
You want to get back to us?
Yes.
Okay.
You can do that, you've done it before.
Yeah, we can even make life easier for you.
All right, before we make life easier for him, planning any comments?
No, I have nothing to add.
Anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Now you can make life easy for him.
We're going to make like, nobody's ever viewed you and made life...
Appreciate that.
Stand by.
I'm going to make a motion that we deny some of the applications, seeking a setback on, of 10 feet on both, however, we will permit one side of 10 feet, the other side must comply, whichever your clients choose, and grant remainder of the application.
Can I get a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted as modified.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Application number 206-25... Application number 206-25, Grace A. Wood. Permission to erect two-story dwelling, leaving height of 29 feet instead of permitted 28 feet, and floor area ratio of 29.8% instead of permitted 25%. Residence B District, west side of Bayway Avenue, 175 feet north of Bay Bright Court, Bay Shore.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anthony Shikowski, architect, 255 West Main Street, Bay Shore, 11706. I am here representing Grace Wood. We're looking to propose a two-story wood frame structure. Presently, the lot is a vacant lot. As you can see, the calculation of the proposed FAR of 25% is the permitted, we're asking for relaxation of 29.8%. And you can see the breakdown of the first floor, front porch, and the second floor. We would like to introduce a front porch to the home because a number of the homes on that street do have front porches, and it kind of adds a character to the home. Shikowski. Yeah, the S-C is like an S-H, otherwise it's simple. It throws everybody.
Okay, yeah, okay, Mr. Shikowski.
Yeah.
Tell us about why you can't comply at 28 feet, this is new construction.
I'm sorry, 28, okay.
Why can't you not comply at 28?
So, we can, we can comply with 28, we can reduce the amount of crawl space that would be under the home. If you could take a look at the FEMA map, the surrounding area actually on the center of the street, the Brightwater side, is located in Zone AE4, which would then allow us to have a greater height, which those homes have, are, you know, are built taller. We are not in a flood zone. I had checked out with the town of Islip, and the town of Islip had indicated that we're not in the flood zone, even though that entire area flooded during Sandy, I mean, the homes in that area were, right, so... Do you have, I think it's just across the street, down the center of, down the center of Bayway is the flood map, and that's the center that divides Brightwaters and Bay Shore. So... The west side of Bayway is Bay Shore, and the east side is Brightwaters. Brightwater side has that AE4 zone. Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So, wow, expert. As he was saying, they're not in a flood zone, right across the street, quite literally the house straight across the street, and multiple over there is in a special flood hazard area. It's kind of a strange situation they do have in that regard, so I can understand why they would be concerned about flooding. They don't get the additional height from code as an exception because they're not technically in the flood zone, but I can understand to some degree why they might want it, even if they're not entitled to it. You are right, it is new construction, but I can understand the extra crawl space, because, just because it's not in a flood hazard area, it's still going to be prone to flooding, it's just not one that FEMA designates as special flood hazard. You have one, that was granted about two years ago? Yeah, two years ago, 29 feet height granted, that was for an addition.
And that was close to the flood zone, too?
Close to, but not in the flood zone. Yeah, so the property here, highlighted in the blue, and then you go straight across the street, in fact, actually, this kind of is a strange in-between area, there's a flood zone over here, the wetlands, and then right across in Brightwaters, there's a flood zone. I guess they're just a little higher up off of sea level in this particular area, but logic would dictate that if both of the areas around it are flood zones, it won't take very much for them to also end up getting flooded if something happens.
So, again, the purpose of that is so that, actually, the floor joists of the structure of the first floor will not be in, you know, if there's a flood, it's not going to flood up to at least the structure, as opposed to...
I'm sorry, usually based on elevation.
So that's the reason why, and then, you know, I guess we could lower the roof pitch, but then we end up with a shallower slope, so I think it's...
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we grant the application.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted, thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a good night.
Application number 207-25, Donald Jarvis Jr. and Linda Jarvis. Permission to erect one-story addition, 12 by 23.2, leaving side yard of 12.9 feet instead of required 14 feet, and total side yards of 27.4 feet instead of required 28 feet. Residence AA District, 278 Cluster, east side of Astro Drive, 480 feet south of Versa Place, Seville.
Good evening, Francis Palumbo, I'm the contractor for the Jarvis family. Simply put, we're just looking for relaxation of the side yard setback. It's going to be a one-story garage addition.
Okay, planning, any comments on this?
No, no comment.
Is anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, application's granted.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Application number 208-25, Giovanni and Ivana Copo. Permission to erect two-story, two second-story additions, 16.58 by 21.3 and 22.4 by 28.4, leaving front yard of 15 feet instead of required 25 feet, and second front yard of 3.8 feet instead of required 15 feet. Residence B District, northwest corner of Central Islip Boulevard and West Third Street, which is unopened, Ronconkoma, New York.
Good evening, Tor. I'm asking, we want to build on the top of the room, the family room...
Can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, okay, Giovanni Copo, well, I thought to you, you know already who I was. Giovanni Copo.
Yep.
359 Central Islip Boulevard, Ronconkoma, New York. And we want to put the room on the top of the family room that we built four years ago, that you give us the variance. We want to make it a little smaller, we want to make a bedroom on the top, erase the roof on the old area a little bit, because my son is so tall, he bangs his head all the time on the roof, and that's it, that's what we want to do, and please help.
Any questions from the board at this time?
I just have a question for Nick. Nick, I'm just looking, what jumps off page at me is second front yard of 3.8 instead of required 15. Does any of this affect that, or is that existing?
So, it's both existing, the addition that they're proposing is not actually that close, I think it's kind of a mistake to have brought it up that close. The addition is more at 15, and it's next to an unopened road in this case, so the setback is to a 30-foot right-of-way with nobody's house there.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the front yard goes, it was approved by the board somewhat recently for the first-story addition. It's 15 feet at the one corner, this is a very angled lot, by the time you get to the other corner of the addition, it's actually, I think, completely conforming at 25 practically. So they do have a bit of a hardship on that for both that and the second front yard, actually, it's a pretty unique lot.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Application number 209-25, Robert and Christina Darty. Permission to erect two-story dwelling on lot having area of 9,375 square feet instead of required 11,250 square feet, leaving floor area ratio of 28.5% instead of permitted 25%. Residence A District, east side of Sequams Lane West, 1,500 feet south of Sequams Lane, West Islip.
Good evening, members, the applicant, Christina Darty. So, I had been here, I guess it's almost nine years, 10 years ago, for a subdivision of an oversized lot, and we built in 2017 on the first lot, which is 141 Sequams Lane West, and we were going to build in 2018, but then a friend's mom wanted to buy it, and I said, okay, buy it, so we sold the land. However, after that, I think she was just a little overwhelmed with building, and COVID came, and so she kind of didn't do anything with the lot, and we kept asking her, are you going to build, because it's a little bit of an eyesore, as you see. So finally, last year, last November, she sold the lot back to us. And originally, we were granted, because it was conforming to the neighborhood, you know, a lot of the lots are, about 50% of them share the similar substandard dimensions, and so...
Okay, planning, any comments on this?
As was stated, this was part of an approved subdivision before the board, before they're actually asking for less than they asked for the first time it was approved.
Granted as is, are you in the same...
It's, well, it's not exactly the same, because the first application was for a subdivision, so it was two sets of variances, and this one is just for an individual lot.
Right, subdivision already happened.
And the FAR also was, you know, for the other lot.
You're slightly lower than the first FAR, right?
Correct. That was approved.
Mary, what is the timeframe within which they have to pull a building permit complete? I mean, we don't give another nine years, do we?
Uh, well, no, we wouldn't give it this time, we said no. So we asked them to come back.
It's one year, yeah, it's set on the...
You plan on waiting another nine years? I don't know about...
No, we sold it, we actually bought it back, because they weren't going to build, and that's why I'm here again.
And I'm going to move expeditions.
No, no, we're already, I mean, I have the site plan, and I also have the approval, again, from the Board of Health.
Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to grant the application.
Second, second, all in favor? All right, application's granted, thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I know. Application number 210-25, Joanne McNulty. Permission to erect second-story addition, 34.3 by 40.5 irregular, leaving front yard of 23.27 feet instead of required 25 feet, and side yard of five feet instead of required 14 feet. Roofed over porch, leaving side yard of five feet instead of required 14 feet, floor area ratio of 30% instead of permitted 25%, and to leave shed, having side yard of 3.6 feet and rear yard of three feet instead of required four feet each. Residence B District, east side of Manitoc Boulevard, 320 feet north of Ontario Drive, Bay Shore.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Generico Zalino, 2125 Deer Park Avenue, Deer Park, New York, 11729. Here for the homeowner, Joanna McNulty, residing on 1403 Manitoc Boulevard, Bay Shore, also known as Section 289, Block 4, Lot 72, located in the Residence B Zone. We're requesting relief from the board to build a second-floor addition and a front porch. The proposed additions require a variance for front yard setback, requesting to build at 24.25 feet from permitted 25 feet, a difference of .75 feet. Proposed second floor and front porch require variances for minimum side yard setback, requesting to build at five feet from permitted 14 feet, a difference of nine feet, and if the board would agree to amend the call to include the aggregate side yard, which was overlooked on the zoning's denial, requesting to build at 19.75 feet. The neighbor, there's a neighbor at 1409 Manitoc that was approved by the board. Yes. It was, well, they were granted back in 2008. Second floor.
But does that mean you should stay the same, you stay placed?
It was president's, yes. It was a granted, yes, in 2008 with an FAR of 31. Yes, sir. What do you mean is lapsed? I have the, I have the approval from the board.
The history of which one, I'm sorry?
Of this piece.
On this particular property, no. In this area, once before, yes.
Oh, wait, say that again, on this particular property, no, or in this area?
This area.
Yeah, the thing he cited is correct, there was a grant once for a five-foot side yard for a house of a few to the north. I don't necessarily think that's the nature and character of the area, but it was granted, he is correct about that.
But you have to look at the nature and character of the neighborhood.
Oh, no, I agree, so I'm going to bring this up, because this is important, I think. This neighborhood was developed, and you can kind of see the different ridge line in this part that's out, it looks like they were developed with, you know, one-car attached garages that have very compromised side yards. It's so, five-foot side yard, incredibly common in this area. Second story is not too uncommon, five-foot second stories is pretty uncommon, the one grant he said is completely true. Beyond that, I didn't really find very much else. What most people that do have a second story have done, and I think I can find one down the road here the other way, is, yeah, so this would be an example, they did the second story and then just, actually, this guy even still has the garage, they just decided not to go over the garage, which ends up being a conforming second-story addition. So, definitely true, five-foot side yards, it's very much the character of the neighborhood, pretty much everybody does it, it was developed that way. At a one-story, yes. Second story, not very common from what I can tell. One grant, definitely true, though.
We have, Mr. Cousins, what you know, we have to look at the nature and character of the neighborhood, and the nature and character of the neighborhood does not support this application. You may have a one-off, but I'm guessing there's probably 35 homes in the 500-foot radius, or at least four, and there's one, that's not the nature and character. So I don't know how we can grant this and then deny it next week.
I, yeah, I would then ask for an adjournment and then come back to the board with a different proposal. Well, when's the next hearing? I tried, we waited so long for this one. Excuse me? That's 27th? 27th, May 27th, okay. I don't think so. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
So we have 13 accessory apartments to renew for a period of three years?
Second, all in favor?
I have no idea who that was. And we have, I have one case to read into the record. It's application number 738-24, Charles and Natalie Duplessis. Yep, it was before us twice with side yard setback relaxation for...
We're still on the record.
A proposed garage attached by breezeway. The first time they appeared, they asked for a side yard of 10 feet, then they came back and asked for a side yard of 14. Both were not acceptable to the board, because 18 feet is required. They've now withdrawn that part of the application, seeking the one-story garage, they're going to remove the breezeway and comply with...